Good evening, everyone. Is this on? It is now. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Delhi Township Board of Trustees Meeting for May the 11th, 2016. We will begin first with a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight's moment of silence is dedicated to the Delhi Police Department as we celebrate National Police Week. We are fortunate people in Delhi that we have such a talented group of men and women dedicated to our safety. We would also like to remember the Cincinnati firefighter, Mr. Jordan Penizik, who unfortunately lost his life in a fatal auto accident. So, with both thoughts in mind, a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Motion for consideration. Begin, Mr. Looby.
Motion 2016-70. Approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees meeting held on April 27, 2016, and dispense with the reading.
I move motion 2016-070 to approve the minutes.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion 2016-71. Approve bills for payment.
I move motion 2016-071 to approve bills for payment.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion 2016-72. Approve the payment of overtime for pay period ending April 26, 2016.
I move motion 2016-072 to approve payment of overtime.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion 2016-73. Accept the voluntary resignation of Jacob E. Marshall, part-time firefighter, paramedic, in the Fire Department, effective May 12, 2016.
I move motion 2016-073 to accept the voluntary resignation of Jacob E. Marshall.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion 2016-74. Accept the voluntary resignation of Kelly L. Berger, part-time seasonal gardener in the Parks and Recreation Department, effective May 5, 2016.
I move motion 2016-074 to accept the voluntary resignation of Kelly Ella Berger.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion 2016-75. Approve the seasonal termination of Gary S. Merritt, part-time seasonal service worker in the Parks and Recreation Department, effective May 11, 2016.
I move motion 2016-075 to approve the seasonal termination of Gary S. Merritt.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion 2016-76. Approve the hiring of Andrew T. Briner as part-time seasonal service worker in the Parks and Recreation Department at a rate of $9.08 per hour, effective May 12, 2016.
I move motion 2016-076 to approve the hiring of Andrew T. Briner.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion 2016-77. Approve the hiring of Daniel L. Kukumeister, full-time facilities and property foreman in the Public Works Department at a rate of $19.50 per hour, effective May 23, 2016.
I move motion 2016-077 to approve the hiring of Daniel L. Kukumeister.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion passes. Welcome, Mr. Kukumeister. Presentations. We'll begin this evening with a presentation by Pete Pritchard, who is the Steering Committee Chair for the Bicentennial this summer. So, Mr. Pritchard.
Good evening. Back again. I just want to actually just give you a quick update, so I'll just dive right into it. Friday, May 20, again, we have the historic Ohio River Valley Wine Tasting at the Delhi Historical Society. Learn about wine making in Delhi and taste wines from Henke Winery here locally. There will be a silent auction of wines and split the pot. Cost is $20. Again, that's Friday, May the 20th. All are welcome. The following day, Saturday, May 21st, Family History Scanning Station. Again, this one's going to be held back at the Delhi Public Library, 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. Again, Saturday, May 21st. June 9th, Delhi Day at the Cincinnati Reds. Kind of a big deal for us. That's a 7:10 p.m. game. To order tickets, obviously, go to reds.com/delhi, and you can get your special rates there and attend Delhi Day at the Reds. June the 11th, Bicentennial Summer Concert Series kicks off, 6:30 p.m. with the Rodney Allen Combs Band. There will be two more concerts offered as well here during the summer. July 14th with Excalibur. In August 27th, featuring Howlin' Wax. Sorry, Howlin' Max. Also like to kind of remind everyone of the Bicentennial Community Cookbook. We're still trying to get recipes, so we're looking for people to submit them. Very easy to do it. Again, go to gnrpublishing.com and submit your recipes, or you can, again, drop them off at Brozy Tours, 417 Anderson Ferry, or here at the Administration Building, 934 Nebro, or the Delhi Community and Senior Center, 647 Nebro. I'd also kind of just like to remind everyone, you know, there's a lot going on. I know I say that every month, but really, we are now into it. This thing is really full steam ahead, and there's a lot of activities going on for the next few months here, especially for the summer months, but there's stuff going on in the fall as well. But we do urge everyone to follow us on our Facebook page, Delhi Township 2016. So, keep an eye on for everything that's going on. So, any questions or comments or anything?
I don't think so. But thank you very much, Pete.
Okay. Well, very good. And we're going to let Tony Capel from the Delhi Business Association is going to give a little presentation on one of the bigger events for the Bicentennial, so.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Capel? This is Tony Capel. He's president of the Delhi Business Association, who's doing one of our main events this summer for the Bicentennial.
Thanks for the quick minute. Won't take too long. The Delhi Business Association is going to present Dog Days of Delhi. It's going to be on August 27th, right up at the park. We have a lot of events planned for the entire day. So, it's going to be one of those events that you can come out, starting at 8:00 in the morning for a fishing contest. Stay all the way until 7:30 at night when Howlin' Max will be performing one of the best bands here locally that you can hear. So, just want to give everybody a little bit of a rundown of the different events that we are going to have up there. As I mentioned, at 8:00, the day starts out with a fishing contest right there at the lake. At around 11:00, we will begin our dog contest, as promptly named Dog Days of Delhi. We're going to have a couple of dog competitions. The cutest dog, dog that performs the best trick, and dog that looks most like their owner. I'm sure there's a few of those out there. We are also going to have a wiener dog race. So, if you have a dachshund, you want to make sure and get them signed up for the wiener dog race. In the lodge, from 11:00 to 4:00, we will have Pioneer Days. Where the Delhi Historical Society, along with Price Hill Historical Society, and I believe Sailor Park Historical Society, are going to present a lot of different artifacts and displays and some hands-on activities for you to come up and check out what's happened in Delhi over the last 200 years. We are also going to have the Education Committee setting up a tent where they will have games all day long, where checkers, chess, a lot of board games, and some American Indian games. I don't have a lot of details on those, but it sounds like some very interesting stuff. Tossing corn cobs, sounds a lot like our modern cornhole, but be some neat things. At 12:30, we will have a hot dog eating contest for all those that can put away the food. That's something you might want to get into. Drew's on the River is going to sponsor a cornhole tournament, so we will have that up there. At 2:00, we have a vintage baseball game. Some guys are going to come out in the old-time uniforms and play on Field One, right there on the main field. That'll be a lot of entertainment. And then the evening entertainment starts off at 5:00 with the Oak Hills Band and Drumline. They're going to come out and perform for us, followed by Mount St. Joseph University's Band. And then, as mentioned, at 7:30 p.m., Howlin' Max will top the night off with some of the best music around. All day long, we are going to have food for sale and drinks. Alcoholic, we've got beer. Craft beers are going to be there. That's the new big thing, so we're going to have a lot of craft beers for everybody to try out. The Delhi Liquor Store has been fantastic with helping us get that all set up. If you are interested in setting up a booth for the day, we will provide the booth. It's $150 as a booth sponsor. Businesses can come out, set up a booth, promote their product all day long. We're looking for a lot of businesses to participate in that. I believe we've already got close to 15 booths signed up, so it is going to be a very big event. We'll also have a silent auction. Again, Delhi Liquor is providing us with some of their promotional material that they have. If anybody was in there during the Christmas month, they had this nice reclining chair. It was a Super Bowl lounge chair that they gave to us, along with many other items. Some neon signs and some really neat stuff that we're going to auction off. And the really good news about all of this is all of the proceeds will go to the lasting memorial that the Bicentennial Committee is working on putting together. They're doing a great job, working very hard, Pete and his group, in order to make this possible for the community. So, the other very good news is all the events are free. So, if you want to bring your dog out, you want to fish in the fishing competition, the hot dog eating contest, it's all free. Alls you'll have to do is go to delhi-business.org, the Business Association website, and sign up for the events. We'd love to have a lot of the community out there. Bring your furry friends. All dogs welcome. Just make sure they're on a leash. And clean up after them, please.
Yeah. Tony, thank you so much. I think the day sounds exciting, and all we need is for everybody to show up and have a good time.
It'll be fantastic. And thanks again to the Township for helping make this possible.
Thanks, Tony. Mr. Osterfeld, since you're going to be talking about a Bicentennial event, I know this is a little out of order, but why don't you come up now and do the Veterans Bicentennial event? And that way, we'll have all the Bicentennial together here.
Thank you. While June the 11th, we're having a military display along with a fishing event, and at the display, we'll have the USS Cincinnati Sub, not the real one, a replica. We'll have some vehicles and different things from the Navy SEALs. We'll have a M-29 Weasel, which I don't know what it is. And we have an M-5A1 Stewart Tank, which is, it weighs like 33,000 pounds. And we was a little bit leery of that at first, but we, after talking to the people, we found out that it has rubber tracks on it, so it's not going to tear up the driveway or anything going in. And then we'll also have a Hummer there. And I tried to get something from the Air Force, but an F-16 is a little bit big trying to bring it in, so they didn't have anything much smaller. The event will go on from 8:00 in the morning to 4:00 in the afternoon, and there will be somebody at each event there, each display that we have, all day long. If anybody has any questions or anything like that. I know for sure at the Cincinnati Sub, that they told me they're going to change guys there, like every two hours, there's going to be somebody different there. And they're going to have some archives from some older subs and everything else like that. So, everybody is going to try and bring something else beside the main attraction to, you know, I think it'll be a pretty good kids event and for adults. I mean, a lot of adults have never seen any of this kind of stuff, I mean, up close, maybe in movies, things like that. And we have one of our guys that's going around to the schools, and they're passing out these. I know you've got one of the big ones up there, but I'll give you one of these here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And that's all I have. If anybody else wants these, I'll be glad to give you one after the meeting's over.
Thanks, Don. Oh, Don, did you want to say anything about Memorial Day?
Well...
We've got it on our list to remind everyone to get ready and to show up.
Right. Memorial Day, our Memorial Day ceremony is May the 29th, Sunday, at 1:00 p.m. There'll be a shuttle bus running from the Senior Center over here and then back after the event is over. And after the event is over, we will have the Skirt Game Committee will be grilling out hot dogs and brats and different type drinks. And they'll be, we're going to have three bagpipers this year, and also the calling of the 19 names of the KIA's. And we will also have taps and the echo. So, we'll have two buglers there. And I'm on it, my grandson is Hoon Lee from Korea, and he will be there, so it's going to be a happy event for us.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a reminder to everyone, the Delhi Veterans put on a wonderful Memorial Day ceremony, as well as Veterans Day in November. If you have young children to learn about the Veterans, come out on that day. It's really a moving experience to hear the roll call of the KIA's. So, mark that date as well. That's Sunday, May the 29th. Okay, I think that concludes presentations. Trustee correspondence. Trustee Oswald?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Trustee Sturts?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
And nothing from me. A report from our fiscal officer, Mr. Looby.
Our next Fair Board meeting will be Tuesday, May 17, 2016, at 5:30 here in the Admin Building. That's all I have.
All right. There's no need for public hearings, so reports from Department, Parks and Recreation Director, Josh Torbeck.
Thank you, trustees. I wanted to give you a quick update on the levy certifications we requested and received from Hamilton County Auditor regarding the millage figures. You'll see the figures up there on the screen. As you know, we requested certifications from the Auditor for .40, .49, and .59. As you can see from the chart, they fell short of the five-year recommended budget except for the .59. The reason being is we were operating on the assumption that 1 mil equaled 450,000. Came back, it was a little bit under at 445,808. Therefore, to meet the minimum needs of the five-year recommended budget, we'd have to go from the .49 to the .50 figure, just a little adjustment to make up that little bit of a difference. Additionally, later on, we're going to ask for a resolution, asking for certification for the .54 figure as well, just to give us another option. The .50 meets the requirements, but it's such a slim margin that we thought it'd be a good idea to do a .54, just for any unforeseen costs such as healthcare or workers' comp or anything like that. So, it lays it out pretty good as far as what we're looking at in the cost per home annual amount. You know, the numbers between a .50, a .54, and a .59 really aren't that much different for homeowners, so it's all relatively close.
Okay. So, our original suggestion to go for multiple millage, although we went for multiple millage amounts, they still weren't where we needed to be. So, I think we're, okay, so we're going to, there, a resolution tonight for two additional millage amounts.
.50 and .54.
All right. Okay. Any questions?
No.
All right. Thank you, Josh. I think you have an additional recognition.
I just wanted to say a quick thank you to John Salter. He's a Delhi resident, but he's with the Cincinnati Elks Lodge, who applied for a small grant to get equipment for the Parks Department, and they did receive the grant and handed us a check recently for $591.92, which will help us buy a new backpack blower and a new handheld blower. So, I just wanted to recognize them. Once we pick up the equipment, he's going to come over and take some pictures, so we'll be sure to send that off to everybody.
Great. Great. Thank you very much, Ohio Elks. We need that help with the Parks equipment. Thanks, Josh. Also, under Special Events, Mr. Landrum?
Thank you. We have next week, a very full week, the Board has, starting on Monday, on the 16th, at 8:00 a.m., bright and early, ribbon-cutting ceremony at the Waffle House. The Waffle House will plan on opening immediately following the ribbon-cutting ceremony, so if you're looking for breakfast that morning, it might be the place to be or a place to avoid if it's so busy. But we welcome them to the community. Following by Wednesday, a very exciting event will be the groundbreaking Wednesday, May 18th, at 1:00 p.m. at 440 Greenwell Avenue, which will be the new Firehouse location. All are welcome. We didn't even really think about it, but we're going to see about, hopefully it dries up enough, or we'll have to put boards down, Ron, or something. So, we will be checking out the ground conditions Monday and Tuesday, and of course, looking at the forecast and everything so forth. But the public is welcome to attend that. Parking will be at Floral Paradise Gardens. We will have police. Howarth said that we will have some traffic control, some help there with that. We expect other dignitaries potentially to show up as well, but residents are welcome this very exciting groundbreaking ceremony. So, all this next week.
A busy week in Delhi, so finally a groundbreaking for the fire station. All right. All right, then, reading of the resolutions, Mr. Looby?
Resolution 2016-052. Resolution approving purchase order obligations. Encurred on behalf of the Township by the Township Administrator, authorizing payment of certain purchase order obligations, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move dispense with second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes?
Resolution 2016-053. Resolution declaring necessity for levying tax exceeding 10 mil limitation. Certifying proposed .50 mils. Parks and Recreation Levy Questions to the Hamilton County Auditor, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? 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 Any discussion on this resolution?
street rehabilitation and repair project expenses, authorizing the Director of Public Works to execute any required documents in connection with the grant application, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Ron?
We tried.
Yeah. What, you didn't think I could see that on here?
This is a yearly grant offered from Hamilton County Engineers. It's a predetermined amount of just over 18,000, and your only stipulation is as long as you're fixing roads, you can receive the money. So...
I move a dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-057, resolution authorizing participation in the Ohio Bureau of Workers' Compensation Group Rating Program with the Ohio Association of Public Treasurers, effective January 1st, 2017, utilizing Comp Management LLC as its representative, authorizing the Township Administrator to execute and submit all required participation documents, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Lisa Doerger, our Human Resource Manager.
Thank you, trustees. So, each year, we pay Bureau Workers' Compensation premiums. Those estimates come out in the spring of the year before they're due. Excuse me, I have a cold. In past years, we have had CareWorks Comp, formerly known as Frank Gates, as our third-party administrator to help us determine what group is best for us to be in, what program the BWC offers to be in. That group that we've been in for several years is called a Group Experience Rating Program. Basically, it's a discount program, so instead of paying the full 100% of the BWC estimated premium upfront, they give you a discount. They say, okay, this group experience is good, we'll give you like a 35% discount is what we've had in the past. So, this year, CareWorks Comp did not invite us to participate in that Group Experience Rating Program. We had some larger claims a little bit in past years, so they said, we're not going to invite you to that. We will invite you, however, to this different group. It's called a Group Retrospective Rating Premium Program. The way that that works is you pay that 100% of that cost upfront, and then if your group, including us, is the township, there's several townships within this group, if you perform well, meaning you have lower claim costs, lower compensation cost paid with those claims, and reserve costs, then in years 2019, 2020, and 2021, we'll rate your experience in 2017, and we'll give you reimbursements. That's not a guarantee that you'll get those reimbursements. It all depends on how your group performs, including other people besides just us. Just to kind of give you a gauge, you an idea, in 2015, we paid $108,000 in Bureau Workers' Comp premiums. This year, we're slotted to spend about $100,000, basically even. If we were to go with CareWorks Comp, our current third-party administrator right now, we would be paying about $134,000 in premiums in 2017. So, we're looking at a $34,000 estimated jump. However, we have been approached by Comp Management. It's another third-party administrator in the game of workers' comp. They are getting a Group Experience Rating Program together with other townships. They have invited us to be a part of that program. They are expecting a 39% discount, so it's a little bit better than our 35 that we've been receiving. This is all, this is new for them. They have lots of cities, they have lots of villages, but this is kind of their first venture into townships. So, the group is, I talked to our rep today, it's like 99.9% ago. They have to have forms like we're signing today to make sure that they have enough townships to make it go and make it a viable group. But they're projecting for us to spend between like $82,000 and $84,000 in 2017. So, if we do go with them, we'll definitely have savings versus what we're spending in 16 to 17, you know, around that $14,000, $15,000 savings. In addition to that, you also pay administrative fees to a third-party administrator. CareWorks Comp slash, they used to be Frank Gates, they've kind of had the monopoly on, you know, townships, so their fees have been pretty high. We would save $8,000 in administrative, third-party administrator fees as well. So, we would spend, you know, say about $15,000 in premium and $8,000 in administrative fees by switching to CareWorks, or Comp Management. So...
Okay.
No questions?
No questions.
No questions.
And if I may, trustees, I did speak with the two local, there's more than this, but the two local, other local townships. I've spoke with Colrain today, they will be one of them. Sycamore Township is one of them. And, you know, with Delhi in it, like she said, oh, anything can happen, but it appears 99 point some percent that it's a go. So, very pleased with it. Actually, Colrain's one that approached us originally, and we had a look at it, and we're like, how can we refuse this amount? And here's the whole thing, next year, we can shop again. So, we're not held to anything. We'll take a $50,000 savings in a one year, and then next year, just like car insurance, you'll shop around, see if you can get anything better. So, we're pleased with this, as well as that we are excited about changing third-party administrator. You know, I don't want to speak ill of anybody, but, you know, we had been with the previous one for a number of years, and it's a good thing when you change because they have different perspectives and different ways of looking at certain things. And we would like to be, you know, I would say, a little aggressive and change some things up on the workers' comp side of it, and of course, safety and all of that as well. So, we're excited, and pretty much from what I heard today, and until I heard from Colrain today, I was still unsure, but they have given a thumbs up to it. So, excited to save some money.
Yeah. Trustee Sturts, you have a question?
I fibbed, I have a question. What happens if that 1% it falls through? Do you have a backup plan, or do we have to stay with who we have? Do you have enough time to research another one?
We do have enough time. So, this is a form that we'll fill out, and if the group doesn't go, it's basically invalid, like it's, like it never happened. Unfortunately, we would be stuck with going with that Group Retrospective Rating and, you know, that $134,000 upfront premium. Comp Management does not have a Group Retro group yet. They're just going with the Group Experience group to get their feet wet in township arena. But they did talk about, you know, in future years, that they would be doing both the Group Experience and the Group Retro. So, we would unfortunately be stuck where we're at, if that's the case.
Okay. We'll cross our fingers. Thank you.
I move a dispense with second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-058, resolution declaring nuisance for excessive vegetation at 5218 Riverwatch Drive, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Mr. Roach?
Thank you, trustee Seavey. We received a complaint on this vacant property of excessive vegetation. We issued order letters with no compliance. We inspected the property this morning, and it still persists, so requesting that your board declare this property a nuisance, so we can address this violation with our nuisance abatement procedures.
I move a dispense with second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-059, resolution declaring nuisance for excessive vegetation at 186 Francis Rids Drive, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Mr. Roach?
Thank you, trustee Seavey. We received a complaint on this vacant property of excessive vegetation. We issued order letters, no compliance. The violation still persists, so requesting that your board declare this property a nuisance, so we can address this violation with our nuisance abatement procedures.
I move a dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-060, resolution declaring nuisance for excessive vegetation and accumulated debris at 476 Wilkie Drive, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Again, Mr. Roach?
Thank you, trustee Seavey. We received a complaint on this vacant property of accumulated debris and excessive vegetation. We should order letters with no compliance. We inspected the property today, it's in the same condition, so requesting that your board declare this property a nuisance, so we can address these violations with our nuisance abatement procedures.
I move a dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-061, resolution declaring nuisance for excessive vegetation at 1219 Pine Knott Drive, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Again, Mr. Roach?
Thank you, trustee Seavey. We received a complaint of excessive vegetation on this vacant property. We issued order letters with no compliance. We inspected the property this morning, it's in the same condition, so requesting that your board declare this property a nuisance, so we can address this violation with our nuisance abatement procedures.
I move a dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-062, resolution declaring nuisance for excessive vegetation and accumulated debris, providing for the removal of a junk motor vehicle at 333 Don Lane, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Again, Tony.
Thank you, trustee Seavey. This is the hat trick here, it has all three, it has an upper motor vehicle, debris, and excessive vegetation, is a vacant property. We should order letter with no compliance, so we're requesting that your board declare this property a nuisance, so we can address these violations with our nuisance abatement procedures.
I move a dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey.
Yes.
Mr. Oswald.
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts.
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-063, resolution declaring nuisance for excessive vegetation and accumulated debris at 5415 Whitmore Drive, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Mr. Roach?
Thank you, trustee Seavey. We received a complaint on this vacant property of accumulated debris and excessive vegetation. We should order letters with no compliance. We inspected the property this morning, it's in the same condition, so we're requesting that your board declare this property a nuisance, so we can address these violations with our nuisance abatement procedures.
I move a dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?